Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Here.
Budmats.
President.
O'Brien.
Here.
Finesiano.
Here.
Passassi.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Sanoyka.
Here.
With seven present and none absent, there is a quorum. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. The first order of business is to approve the minutes from previous meetings. There are two sets of minutes to approve tonight. The first is April 9th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Some would permit Mayor Protem.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka for the first, and it's been seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. The second set of minutes are for the April 26th, 2022 City Council Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Some moved.
Alderman Budmats, thank you for the motion, and it's been seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Do I have a motion to deviate from the agenda for Police Life Saving Awards?
Some moved.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka for the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Do I have a motion to deviate from the agenda for Police Life Saving Awards?
Some moved.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka for the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Do I have a motion to deviate from the agenda for Police Life Saving Awards?
Some moved.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka for the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and we will now deviate from the agenda. And for this, I will defer to Chief Nowacki.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
No.
There it goes.
Hello? There we go. Thank you Mayor Protem. Thank you City Council for this opportunity. Today is a very, very special evening. I think we're actually making history today. We have six officers receiving a total of seven life-saving awards. So that is just outstanding. What could have resulted in actually a loss of life turned into a celebration of life. We're talking about four individuals that were given a second chance. These are fathers, mothers, sons, daughters. Like I said, they were given another opportunity because of the actions of six Rolling Meadows Police Officers that had the knowledge, the skill, the training, and the equipment to save lives. So it is my honor today to bring up our first two award winners. It's going to be Officer Bian and Officer Snare. If you could step on up here. And like I said, these life-saving awards actually were from three separate incidents. The incidents ranged from an individual having a medical emergency, a heart attack. There was also an incident involving a shooting involving two individuals. And the third incident was an individual who had overdosed. And like I said, the officers all sprang into action, and they saved the lives of these four individuals. The first award, like I said, I want to issue today is Officer Bian and Officer Snare. As Chief of Police, it's my honor to present you the Life Saving Award. On December, Officer Bian and Officer Snare were dispatched to a home in Rolling Meadows for a report of a person not breathing. The individual had recently been released from the hospital for a medical condition. Upon arrival, the individual was actually receiving CPR from his wife. I actually do have the wife and the individual who was having a heart attack at the time here today. So it's really great. I want to thank them for coming. I'll try to keep the information, protect their privacy, but it's just, like I said, it's such an honor to have both of them here today. And I think it's even more important for the officers who were there at the house to have them present because they could see the true difference they had made by their actions. Officer Bian and Officer Snare, they jumped into action. They took over CPR. They actually deployed an AED. The AED had indicated to actually shock the patient, which they did. And at that time, the patient became conscious and began breathing. The fire department then arrived and transported the individual to the hospital. Officer Bian and Officer Snare's actions warrant the issuance of the Life Saving Award as their actions directly resulted in the saving of an individual's life. Your commitment to the Rolling Meadows Police Department, the community, and the law enforcement profession highlights the image of this department. Your actions are commendable and exceptional. Congratulations. Nora, if you could hand these awards to these officers, I really appreciate it. You were emotional when I saw you at your house the first time in the talk, you didn't seem to come out. I do have something special for Nora. I do have, like I said, she was performing CPR. I can't stress enough, if you do not know CPR, please learn it because the life you save could be a loved one of yours. So I really can't stress that enough. Like I said, she jumped into action too. So I do have an award for her. I have a Rolling Meadows Police Coffee mug. So enjoy. And then I also have a little thank you with one of our police patches. After we give the awards, I do have some cake and some donuts in my office. You're more than welcome to stay. Officer Bian, you can stay up here. Thank you. Officer Snare, the next two award winners are Officer Bian. He gets two awards today. And the second is Officer Edgar. And actually, we have a third that was involved in the two. Officer Sucheki, you want to come on up?
Not long ago, we had a shooting incident at one of our local restaurant bars. It was a very chaotic scene. I actually got there later. But all three of these officers, it was an incident involving two individuals shot. They jumped into action. Like I said, it was a very chaotic scene. They actually deployed life-saving first aid on two gunshot victims. And I really believe they're responsible for saving these two individuals' lives. I'm going to start with Officer Bian and Officer Edgar. As Chief of Police, it's my honor to present you the Life Saving Award on January 24th of this year. You two were dispatched to a restaurant bar located in Rolling Meadows for a report of an active shooter. Once unseen, you located an individual in the kitchen area with a gunshot wound to the lower stomach. Wasting no time in utilizing a sealing bandage commonly used for chest wounds, Officer Edgar and Officer Bian placed the item over the bleeding wound. It was very fortunate and a great example of being prepared to have this life-saving piece of equipment available. Because of being prepared and having the knowledge and skill to dwell upon during a chaotic event, the sealing bandage was used, which slowed the bleeding down, which prevented possible death. Officer Bian and Officer Edgar then stayed with the victim, continued care for the individual. Upon arrival, the paramedics, the victim was tended to further and was eventually transported to the hospital for advanced medical treatment. In situations such as this, seconds count, and your quick actions saved the life of this individual. This was no insignificant matter performed on this January day. The use of this life-saving tool was able to effectively be put into action without hesitation. Ultimately, what could have resulted in a tragic situation was a loss of a life turned into a celebration of life. Officer Bian and Officer Edgar's actions warrant the issuance of our Life Saving Award, and their actions directly resulted in the saving of the individual's life. Your commitment to the Rolling Meadows Police Department, the community, and the law enforcement profession highlights the image of this department. Your actions are commendable and exceptional. Thank you, two. And Deputy Chief Search, you want to present the two awards?
Well, the third is Officer Sucheki. It's the same incident. I guess I'll go Officer Sucheki. He actually attended to an individual that was shot in the upper leg, was bleeding profusely, actually applied a tourniquet to the individual, slowing the bleeding down enough for the paramedics to attend to him and perform a more advanced medical treatment. So Officer Sucheki, thank you, two, for your actions. All three of you, it's not something that we commonly do, but like I said, all three of these officers were prepared and jumped right into action, and it's an honor to be part of the team with you, and thank you for that. Thank you. The last two awards go to Officer Levin and Officer Riley. Officer Riley cannot attend today, but Officer Levin, if you could come on up. Like I said, we have a wide variety of life-saving. This was an overdose victim. As Chief of Police, it's my honor to present you with the Life Saving Award on June 15th. Officer Levin and Officer Riley were dispatched to 2,600 block of a street in town for a report of an unresponsive female. Once unseen, you observed a female laying on the ground next to a vehicle. Both of you quickly assessed their condition and discovered only a very faint pulse. The person was dying right in front of you. In addition, you determined that the victim exhibited signs of narcotic use and that a strong probability existed that she had overdosed. At this point, you both used your recent training in Mr. Narcan, which is a overdose drug reversal, and performed a sternum rub. The victim was, came to after being administered the Narcan, and the victim was turned over to the paramedics who arrived at the scene and eventually transported her to the hospital for further treatment. In situations such as this, seconds count, and your quick actions saved the life of this individual. Ultimately, what could have resulted in a tragic situation with a loss of a life turned into a celebration of life. Officer Levin and Officer Riley's actions warrant the issuance of our Life Saving Award as your actions directly result in the saving of an individual's life. Your commitment to the Rolling Meadows Police Department, the community, law enforcement profession highlights the image of this department. Your actions are commendable and exceptional. Thank you. There's cake in my office. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Now it's time to close the floor. Do I have a motion to? Do I have a motion to close the floor?
Second.
Thank you Alderman Budmats for the motion, and thank you for the second, Alderman O'Brien. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and we will now close the floor and move into the next agenda item. There are no mayor reports for this evening. Do we have any ward reports? Okay, first, we have Alderman Sanoyka, and then we'll go to you, Alderman Passassi.
Thank you Mayor Protem. So I received a lot of messages, not just from my ward, but from several other wards as well regarding the recent rainfalls from last weekend and the storms. Glad that everybody is safe, but they did have a lot of questions regarding standing water. So I was able to direct most of those residents to reach out directly to Public Works and to remind everyone of our current policy, which is as long as standing water. It remains after 48 hours. We will definitely have someone take a look. And all of those points will be included in our GIS data at the city to determine long-term storm-water retention projects in conjunction with a lot of our road reconstruction. So thank you to everyone who reported that. And for those who continue to have water issues, please respond, or please report that to Public Works so that way we can assist you. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka. Alderman Passassi.
Yes, on Saturday, we had the Social Services Event over at East Park Apartments. I've talked to several residents while I was there, and would like to thank the Police Department for all that they do regarding social services and the delicious hamburgers that you served. So thank you very much.
Thank you Alderman Passassi. Anyone else? No? All right, this meeting is open to the public for 20 minutes, but apparently we have no one on the sign-in sheet tonight, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda pending ordinances. Light Item A, Ordinance Number 2217, Grant Approval of the Special Use for the Community Church at 2720 Kirchhoff Road for a Montessori School to operate as an accessory use. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Some moved.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka for the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Finesiano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Moving on to consent ordinances, the next item on the agenda are the consent ordinances for first reading. It consists of three items, B through D. Does any Alderman wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Thank you Alderman Budmats.
Item B, please.
Okay. The Chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the ordinance in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
Some moved.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Alderman McHale. Ordinance Number 2200, 22-00, Approve Liquor License Application for... Sorry about that. Light Item C, Ordinance Number 22-00, amend Chapter 18 Building and Building Regulations of the City of Rolling Meadows Code of Ordinances to Adopt and amend the Building Code Ordinance. Light Item D, Ordinance Number 22-00, approve the city's Class 6B Tax Classification Policy and Procedures and Related Amendments to the City Code of Ordinances. The question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for the second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Finesiano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Reyes. Yes. With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance will be moved forward for second reading. Light Item B, 22-00, Alderman Budmats, you had a question? Do I have a motion to approve this ordinance?
Some moved.
Thank you Alderman.
What's the ordinance?
Ordinance Number...
Do I have a number or what's the title?
Approve Liquor License Application for a Class A2 License for Donado Restaurant Group, Anna's Red Apple at 2121 South Plum Grove Road.
From a procedural perspective, your comment would be out of order. Public comments have now closed, so the board has the authority to speak on this item at this time without interruption.
Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
Some moved.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the motion. Has it been seconded? Thank you Alderman Budmats for the second. You wish to discuss?
I do. Would it be possible to have staff provide us a report concerning this business and any of their related entities as far as their timeliness in filing of food and beverage taxes, as well if there's any current matters that are in adjudication before we vote on this at the next meeting? So I'd request that, and then I'd like to advise the person from the audience, if he'd like, this is going to be up for a second reading so he could make his comments at the next meeting, and they could be heard.
Okay.
So if staff could provide us with that kind of report, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, we can certainly include that information in the agenda packet for the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Manager Salvo. Thank you Alderman Budmats. Will clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Finesiano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance will be moved forward for a second reading. Onto new business. The first item, E, Motion to Approve Payments for the Bills on Warrant, May 10th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
Some moved.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka for the motion. Has it been seconded? Thank you Alderman Budmats for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Finesiano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Finesiano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is approved. Onto consent resolutions. It consists of five items, F through J. Does any Alderman wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Seeing none, the Chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the five resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
Some moved.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka for the motion. Thank you Alderman Budmats for the second. Light Item F, Resolution Number 22R50, Award a Contract for 2022 Annual Thermoplastic Pavement Marketing Services. Light Item G, Resolution Number 22R51, Approving Tyler Contract Management Module Add-on. Resolution Number 22R52, Award a Contract for Public Works Administrative Assistant. Resolution Number 22R53, Authorize the Ordering of Snow Ice Control Salt for 2022/2023 Winter Season. Resolution Number 22R54, Approve Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Rolling Meadows Police Association. The question is, shall the resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Finesiano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes. With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. That brings the council to other business and reports. The first one is Mayor's Appointment for Planning and Zoning Commission, Glenn Gurkin. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment?
Some moved.
Second.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the motion, and thank you Alderman Passassi for the second. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Finesiano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. That brings the council to other business and reports. The first one is Mayor's Appointment for Planning and Zoning Commission, Glenn Gurkin. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment?
Some moved.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the motion. Has it been seconded? Thank you Alderman Budmats for the second. You wish to discuss?
I do. Would it be possible to have staff provide us a report concerning this business and any of their related entities as far as their timeliness in filing of food and beverage taxes, as well if there's any current matters that are in adjudication before we vote on this at the next meeting? So I'd request that, and then I'd like to advise the person from the audience, if he'd like, this is going to be up for a second reading so he could make his comments at the next meeting, and they could be heard.
Okay.
So if staff could provide us with that kind of report, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, we can certainly include that information in the agenda packet for the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Manager Salvo. Thank you Alderman Budmats. Will clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Finesiano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes. With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance will be moved forward for a second reading. Onto consent resolutions. It consists of five items, F through J. Does any Alderman wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Seeing none, the Chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the five resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
Some moved.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka for the motion. Thank you Alderman Budmats for the second. Light Item F, Resolution Number 22R50, Award a Contract for 2022 Annual Thermoplastic Pavement Marketing Services. Light Item G, Resolution Number 22R51, Approving Tyler Contract Management Module Add-on. Resolution Number 22R52, Award a Contract for Public Works Administrative Assistant. Resolution Number 22R53, Authorize the Ordering of Snow Ice Control Salt for 2022/2023 Winter Season. Resolution Number 22R54, Approve Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Rolling Meadows Police Association. The question is, shall the resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Finesiano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes. With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. That brings the council to other business and reports. The first one is Mayor's Appointment for Planning and Zoning Commission, Glenn Gurkin. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment?
Some moved.
Second.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the motion, and thank you Alderman Passassi for the second. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Finesiano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. That brings the council to other business and reports. The first one is Mayor's Appointment for Planning and Zoning Commission, Glenn Gurkin. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment?
Some moved.
Second.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the motion, and thank you Alderman Passassi for the second. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Finesiano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Finesiano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance will be moved forward for a second reading. Onto new business. The first item, E, Motion to Approve Payments for the Bills on Warrant, May 10th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
Some moved.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka for the motion. Has it been seconded? Thank you Alderman Budmats for the second. You wish to discuss?
I do. Would it be possible to have staff provide us a report concerning this business and any of their related entities as far as their timeliness in filing of food and beverage taxes, as well if there's any current matters that are in adjudication before we vote on this at the next meeting? So I'd request that, and then I'd like to advise the person from the audience, if he'd like, this is going to be up for a second reading so he could make his comments at the next meeting, and they could be heard.
Okay.
So if staff could provide us with that kind of report, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, we can certainly include that information in the agenda packet for the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Manager Salvo. Thank you Alderman Budmats. Will clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Finesiano.
Yes.
Passassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Now it's time to close the floor. Do I have a motion to? Do I have a motion to close the floor?
Second.
Thank you Alderman Budmats for the motion and thank you for the second, Alderman O'Brien. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it and we will now close the floor and move into the next agenda item. There are no mayor reports for this evening. Do we have any ward reports? Okay, first we have Alderman Sanoyka and then we'll go to you, Alderman Basassi.
Thank you Mayor Proton. So I received a lot of messages, not just from my ward, but from several other wards as well regarding the recent rainfalls from last weekend and the storms. Glad that everybody is safe, but they did have a lot of questions regarding standing water. So I was able to direct most of those residents to reach out directly to Public Works and to remind everyone of our current policy, which is as long as standing water, it remains after 48 hours, we will definitely have someone take a look. And all of those points will be included in our GIS data at the city to determine long-term stormwater retention projects in conjunction with a lot of our road reconstruction. So thank you to everyone who reported that. And for those who continue to have water issues, please respond or please report that to Public Works so that way we can assist you. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka. Alderman Basassi.
Yes, on Saturday, we had the Social Services Event over at East Park Apartments. I've talked to several residents while I was there and would like to thank the Police Department for all that they do regarding social services and the delicious hamburgers that you served. So thank you very much.
Thank you Alderman Basassi. Anyone else? No? All right, this meeting is open to the public for 20 minutes, but apparently we have no one on the sign-in sheet tonight, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, pending ordinances. Light Item A, Ordinance Number 2217, Grant Approval of the Special Use for the Community Church at 2720 Kirchhoff Road for a Montessori School to operate as an accessory use. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka for the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. The question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Moving on to consent ordinances. The next item on the agenda are the consent ordinances for first reading. It consists of three items, B through D. Does any Alderman wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Thank you Alderman Budmats.
Item B, please.
Okay. The Chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the ordinance in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Alderman McHale. Ordinance Number 22... 100, 22-00, Approve Liquor License Application for... Sorry about that. Light Item C, Ordinance Number 22-00, amend Chapter 18 Building and Building Regulations of the City of Rolling Meadows Code of Ordinances to Adopt and amend the Building Code Ordinance. Light Item D, Ordinance Number 22-00, approve the city's Class 6B Tax Classification Policy and Procedures and Related Amendments to the City Code of Ordinances. The question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for the second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes. With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance will be moved forward for second reading. Light Item B, 22-00, Alderman Budmats, you had a question? Do I have a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman.
What's the ordinance?
Ordinance Number...
Number, what's the title?
Approve Liquor License Application for a Class A2 License for Donato Restaurant Group, Anna's Red Apple at 2121 South Plum Grove Road.
From a procedural perspective, your comment would be out of order. Public comments have now closed, so the board has the authority to speak on this item at this time without interruption.
Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the motion. Has it been seconded? Thank you Alderman Budmats for the second. You wish to discuss?
I do. Would it be possible to have staff provide us a report concerning this business and any of their related entities as far as their timeliness in filing of food and beverage taxes? As well if there's any current matters that are in adjudication before we vote on this at the next meeting? So I'd request that. And then I'd like to advise the person from the audience, if he'd like, this is going to be up for a second reading so he could make his comments at the next meeting and they could be heard. So if staff could provide us with that kind of report, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, we can certainly include that information in the agenda packet for the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Manager Salvo. Thank you Alderman Budmats. Will clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance will be moved forward for a second reading. Onto new business. The first item, E, Motion to Approve Payments for the Bills on Warrant, May 10th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka for the motion. Has it been seconded? Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. The question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. Onto Consent Resolutions. It consists of five items, F through J. Does any Alderman wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Seeing none, the Chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the five resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka for the motion. Thank you Alderman Budmats for the second. Light Item F, Resolution Number 22R50, Award a Contract for 2022 Annual Thermoplastic Pavement Marketing Services. Light Item G, Resolution Number 22R51, Approving Tyler Contract Management Module Add-on. Resolution Number 22R52, Award a Contract for Public Works Administrative Assistant. Resolution Number 22R53, Authorize the Ordering of Snow Ice Control Salt for 2022-2023 Winter Season. Resolution Number 22R54, Approve Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Rolling Meadows Police Association. The question is, shall the resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. That brings the council to other business and reports. The first one is Mayor's Appointment for Planning and Zoning Commission, Glenn Gurkin. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the motion and thank you Alderman Basassi for the second. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, Glenn Gurkin is appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Next, we have Mayor's Proclamations and it is Public Works Week, May 15th through the 21st, 2022, and its Ready and Resilient Theme. Is there any city clerk's report tonight?
No, not tonight.
That brings us to the city staff reports. Number one, Introduction of Finance Director Molly Talkington. And with that, I'll refer to Rob Salvo.
Thank you Mayor Proton. Honored to be able to introduce tonight our new Finance Director, Molly Talkington. She began with our organization last week. She's coming to us from CMAP where she previously was the Finance Principal, as well as prior to that, the Interim Controller. Molly has a wealth of local government finance experience. She's worked for a number of different municipalities, working her way up into Finance Director roles and also is heavily involved in the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association. She's a grader of the financial reports for the PAFRA Awards and will serve us very well in that capacity. We're happy to welcome her and I just wanted to make a quick introduction and welcome Molly to the team.
Welcome Molly. Next item, Community Items of Interest, and I will refer to Lori Czak.
Thank you Mayor. The Police Department's Family Services Day held this past Saturday was very successful with approximately 500 people in attendance. Numerous social service agencies attended to talk with residents about resources available to them. This event was a wonderful opportunity for the city's Police Department to have positive interactions with the community and to expand their outreach efforts. Thank you to all who attended and assisted with this great event. The 17th Annual State of the City Address and Luncheon will take place on Wednesday, May 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Meridian Banquets. Hosted by the City of Rolling Meadows and the Chamber of Commerce, this event offers expanded opportunities for all city businesses and area residents to learn more about the city's economic development initiatives with a keynote presentation by Mayor Joe Gallo. To register, visit rmchamber.org or call 847-398-3730. Join the city as it honors our heroes at the Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony on Saturday, May 28th at 11:00 a.m. with the ceremony immediately following at the Carillon Monument on Kirchhoff Road. Veterans and their families are invited to participate in the parade, whether on foot or riding in a trolley. Interested veteran organizations are welcome too. Contact Lori at 847-870-9005 if you would like to be included. Please save the date for the Public Works Open House, scheduled for June 4th, which will be held at the Rolling Meadows Public Works Facility at 3900 Birdnik Street. This family-friendly event will feature a touch of truck for kids, facility tours, demonstrations, and free food while supplies last. This is a great opportunity for residents to learn the many things our Public Works Department does 24/7/365 to serve our community. The Public Works Department is also excited to announce that the new automated refuse pickup is coming August 1st. See the city's website for more information at citirm.org. Planning for this year's 4th of July festivities is underway. The city is currently accepting applications from groups, businesses, and individuals that want to participate in the city's 4th of July Parade, which will be held on Monday, July 4th at 11:30 a.m. along Owl Drive. Applications to participate are due by Monday, June 20th and there is no fee. For more information, visit the city's website at citirm.org. Thank you.
Thank you Lori. Next item, April New Business Report. I'll defer to Business Advocate Martha Corner.
Thank you. We have five new businesses for the month of April. An aluminum products distributor, IT sales and service provider, a roofing company, an in-home personal trainer, and a transportation dispatch firm. More information on all of these businesses can be found in the New Business 2022 listing on the city website. Thank you.
Next, we have the May 17th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Draft Agenda. With that, I will defer to City Manager Salvo.
Thank you Mayor Proton. The May 17th Draft Committee of the Whole Agenda is included in the Agenda Packet. It includes an overview and presentation of the city's communications program, a discussion and presentation, as well as seeking council feedback on a tree preservation ordinance. And lastly, a staff presentation on the city's stormwater management program, as well as the MS4 permit, which is the stormwater conveyance permit that we have in order to manage and handle and discharge stormwater that's collected. So those are the three items that are on the agenda at this time and we will post it in accordance with the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you. Next, we have the May 24th, 2022 City Council Draft Agenda. And with that, I will defer again to City Manager Salvo.
Thank you Mayor Proton. The May 24th is included in the Agenda Packet. And once again, the draft document does include a few items. Notably, the consent ordinances which are on for first reading include a special use at 3660 Edison for an indoor athletic facility, as well as variations related to that property. Also, there is an amendment to the liquor code for a Class G A liquor license for video gaming at Ming Hin. That's contingent on us receiving all of the necessary documents for that consideration, as well as finally, the first reading of an approval of a cold tar ban, which is a follow-up from a prior committee of the whole discussion. We also have on here the purchase of a high ranger forestry vehicle. The agenda again will be posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act once finalized. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes city staff reports. Any matters not on the agenda this evening? All right. With that, I would like to entertain a motion to go into a closed session under the Section 2C21 of the Open Meetings Act regarding the semi-annual review of closed session minutes and under Section 2C11 of the Open Meetings Act regarding litigation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka for the motion. Has it been seconded?
Second.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Basassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session. This meeting is adjourned.